Josh Grant.
Yep.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Here.
Larry Hafner.
Here.
Ed Homel.
Here.
Rich Shield.
Yeah.
Jim Weezer.
Here.
Greg Myrie.
Here.
Oh, you're fine. Go down. Actually, you guys, you can take care of your minutes and you're, you'll need to, oh, I guess, do we want to? So this Marty Herrick, I think, he's a good environmental services director. Do you guys just want to go down and introduce yourselves if you didn't catch that?
Yeah, today is day one for me. I'm Josh Grant from Caledonia here, and this will be the first meeting.
Yeah, Larry Hefner from La Crescent. Been here a few years.
Jim Weezer from Holka.
Ed Homel out in Jefferson Ridge. Out this way.
Wayne Feldmeyer over by Rushard.
Rich Shield by Monte Creek.
I think you guys need to vote for a chairperson and vice chair and then take a few hundred minutes right away with you, I guess.
Well, I guess we'd ask for nominations for chairman.
All nominated. I'll second it. I'm making a motion sees all nominations.
All those in favor, I guess, say aye. I guess that carried. How about a vice chair? Now we need that too, so.
That was Larry on second or Jim seconded that?
I think it might have been Jim.
Yeah, the last one, yeah. I'll nominate Larry Hefner.
Second of that nomination.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of Larry for vice chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Why?
And then I guess we could just take a look at the minutes. Everybody a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting.
Yep.
And we have a motion to. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so I would just abstain.
Okay. And I guess. First hearing, I guess. Really do want to read the notice and stuff?
Yep, we'll kind of switch that back and forth here. So first one, please take notice that an application has been made by Joseph and Janine Ingham, 1996 Old Seventy-Six Road in Caledonia for an interim use permit for a temporary farm dwelling in Wilmington Township. It's parcel fifteen zero one five six zero zero zero. Said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room in City of Caledonia at five PM on Thursday, February twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-two. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department or emailed to Martin. It must be received by Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. This was advertised on February ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. I guess as I drop my pen, maybe it reminded me that. Make sure or try to keep like page noise to a minimum for the mics and then we'll have that Joe will have you come up here when it's your time because we need to catch everything with the, with the mic. So while you come up and sit, sit here. Um. So I guess on this application, nothing has changed. Or is any different than what's, what was put on or in the staff report. The temporary farm dwelling requirement in ordinance is written. Sort of vague. In that part of, part of it is, is actually probably stipulating conditions versus. Things that we can require upfront. And so I believe it's Joe's intended for Joe's daughter to come and live there to kind of assist with. You know, the daily chores and everything. That had maintaining the property entails.
Okay, you want to just kind of tell us what you're up to? Sounds like she explained it pretty well. Any other questions from board here?
I would just want to clarify that this is an interim use permit.
Yes.
And it stays with the person and not with the property?
Correct. If, I guess it proposed, and one of the proposed conditions is that, and as the ordinance requires, is that if Joe is to leave the farm, then this would be void. Or even if you were to stop farming or get rid of adjacent lands or something, then we would.
Would that mean that? Say that you just rented the farm out to somebody? Does that mean that he's stopped farming or?
Um. I mean. At this point, I think that is. So you still have the property and you still have the maintenance on, on all of that. So I think we would still consider that farming. Like that particular accessory dwelling could never be rented out, I guess. That would have to be maintained by him or I guess we have Cassie proposing here. But that's something you guys could look at. It'd have to be a family member.
Okay, that's just a general one.
But yeah.
Sure, this one. She has one. She has, of course, she's a teacher. This is a dependent on farm help versus personal. You know, as, as we age, we're all going to need something. Is that it's, 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 that's not. That's not, you can't transfer to that. Is that right?
Well, the ordinance is kind of vague in that it says. It has to be an accessory dwelling unit, which it will be. And then it has to be occupied by persons who are either members of the family occupying the principal dwelling or engaged in occupation of farming on the premises as partners. And so. It's sort of vague in that it doesn't, it's a temporary farm dwelling. It does, it is called a temporary farm dwelling, but it doesn't necessarily say that. You know, provided their families, they don't need to be actively farming with the, the. Appreciate.
I don't think we need to be concerned about the exact terminology. The main thing is that it doesn't get rented out, is used as a rental property.
Yeah.
I think it's, however they want to help is perfectly fine, you know, just, just so it doesn't get.
Yeah.
And when that relationship is gone, then they got to move it.
Yep, ordinance requires within sixty days that that be removed. And so that was proposed as a condition as well.
The questions of the applicant? If you wanted to go back and, if you're more comfortable back there, you can stay there. That's fine too. But any other comments from the public? You have nothing?
The only one was the comment from. Was the comment from the township that they had.
Yeah, that's what it says here. No negative comments.
I don't even believe I had an inquiry, I guess.
Okay, you seem okay with it?
Well, yeah, there was, we had one there twenty-five years ago when Joe first got married and his mother lived in the house and Joe and his wife lived in the trailer. When Joe's mother moved off, Joe moved into the house, sold the trailer. So it'd be kind of like the same deal, bring the trailer in and then Joe moves to town, the daughter will go to the house and the trailer also gets sold.
Sure.
Last process.
Well, at this point, we could probably go to findings of fact, I believe.
Alright, so number one, that the proposed use conforms. Oh, yes, so we have. Thirteen or nine and fourteen that are not.
I'll make the motion before.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Analysis says that by limiting this proposal to a temporary dwelling, it will keep this parcel in compliance with the density limitation set forth in the land use plan. In addition, preserving agriculture is the primary goal of the land use plan and this proposal brings the next generation back to the farm to provide assistance.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One carries.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates the need for proposed use. Analysis is that the applicant identifies that the farm requires upkeep and maintenance such as maintenance repairs, fencing, plowing, snow, lawn mowing, et cetera. With limited physical abilities, the applicants are in need of someone younger to help out.
All those in favor of the analysis on number two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two carries.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Analysis says that the applicant will be updating their septic system to accommodate both the primary and secondary dwellings.
All those in favor of the analysis on number three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis says that no impact is anticipated. The soap is under five percent in a mobile home has less roof square footage relative to other structures nearby.
All those in favor of the staff analysis on number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, that the soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Soils are four oh one B. The soil survey says that it's suitable for building site development in septic tank absorption fields.
Although it's an agreement with the staff analysis on number five, say aye.
Aye.
I just asked one quick question. I could, is the plan to put in a new septic system or just enlarge what's there or?
Yeah, so. What he, what he looked at doing and actually there. There is ready to permit pending. We were just waiting for, for this process. There, they decided just to redo their septic system for their main dwelling because they had some future building plans there. And so they oversized it then to accommodate.
Okay.
A trailer with, I think, two bedrooms.
Okay.
Say again, anybody, all in favor of number five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five carries.
Number six, the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis says that the largest potential pollution hazard will be the septic system. The applicants have already had a contractor designing a new system large enough to accommodate both the temporary dwelling and the primary dwelling.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, number six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six carries.
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis is that the site will utilize the same driveways, the main dwelling and an existing well and new septic will be shared with the permanent dwelling. Utilities are present in this location, but if any new requirement arises, it is the responsibility of the applicant.
All those in agreement with the staff analysis, number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven carries.
It's number eight, that adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis is that there is adequate space within the farmstead to accommodate parking and loading space.
All those agree with the staff analysis, number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three carries.
Nine, I believe nine, we are skipping. So ten, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other, other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis says that the surrounding properties primarily utilizes agricultural or residential. The proposal will not remove tillable acreage from production or impact the ability to utilize that acreage for production, nor will it affect neighboring residences as this is the existing, as this is an existing residential property.
All those in favor of the analysis on number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten carries.
Eleven, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis says that the surrounding predominant use on vacant properties agricultural and all of the adjacent parcels are under ownership of the applicant. There are a few rural residential properties beyond that. This proposal will not impact development of surrounding vacant property anymore than the existing condition.
All those in favor of the analysis of number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibrations that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. No nuisances are anticipated and this proposal is for a second dwelling unit that will not include offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise or vibration.
All those in favor of the analysis on number twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Analysis says that this is, this interim use is the mechanism to allow a greater density than allowed by the zoning district, but only on a temporary basis. Conditions require that it be removed within sixty days, such time that the applicant ceases to occupy the permanent dwelling.
All those in favor of the analysis on number thirteen, say aye. Any opposed?
Number fourteen was not applicable. Fifteen, that the site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Analysis says that there are no anticipated issues affecting the public's health, safety, morals or general welfare.
All those in favor of the analysis of number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
Is there a second of that motion?
No, second.
All those in favor, can we just do, do a roll call? Just do a voice on this one?
Yeah, that's fine. A roll call, the final.
Just a voice on this, you think is okay? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the findings as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We accept the findings. Then, do you want to read the? Conditions?
Yeah, so. It would be the proposed. Language, I guess, would be that they approve the interim use, that the county board, recommend the county board approve interim use application for temporary farm dwelling with the following conditions. There'll be the two standard ones, one, that the permit shall comply with all federal, state and local laws and regulations. And two, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all of their applicable statutes, rules and ordinances. There are four additional ones that staff are proposing. That'd be number three, that the permit shall be reviewed annually by the zoning administrator. Any substantial changes to the proposals presented and approved will require an amendment to the permit. Four, that the permit shall expire when Joe and Janine Ingham cease to reside in the permanent dwelling or no longer engaged in farming. Five, that the temporary farm dwelling may only be inhabited by Cassie Ingham and her immediate family, to include spouse and children. And six, at the time of termination of the permit, the mobile home temporarily farm dwelling shall be removed from the premises with, within sixty days when practical. I guess my only question on those would be, or like number five, if you want to limit it to. That daughter, I believe Joe has two additional ones as well. If you would, if you want to leave it. As in just like family members. So I guess instead of consider that.
Thoughts on that?
Well, I guess we could put in family members or, you know, the family.
Just his daughters?
Yeah, just his daughters.
Rather than. Yeah. So to be, the five, the temporary farm dwelling may only be inhabited by immediate family members and then their immediate, and their immediate family.
All those in place, would somebody care to make a motion?
Wait a minute, I want to, I want to go on here. Four has the, is the thing I was asking about. When they resist, cease to reside or no longer engage in farming. In other words, if, if they're not farming, if they rent the land out or something.
Oh, um, so I guess that my intent there was either. They. Like move off the farms or like they sell a lot of the land so there's really no.
Well, that goes to my question before. Can this be personal support? You know, most people want to stay in their, stay in their home, even if they're not working. And I, I support that.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are welcome to take that, the second half of that out if you wish.
Kind of covers both bases as, as it is there?
Yeah, I think we should do it like it is.
I get, yeah, I get what you're saying, Larry. I think that would be a determination. That zoning administration would just have to make on a case by case basis.
Yeah.
Well, if they review it annually, would they review it, isn't that, wouldn't that be the time where they say, well, wait a minute, those guys moved to town or they sold everything except two, three acres and?
Yeah, and not to say that something couldn't be done at that point, but we've probably approached it from a different. Mechanism, I suppose, than as a.
Is the land being rented out? Is the land being rented out? Is the land being rented out? It is, okay. So basically, you know, practices wouldn't change.
Right, I think, I think that intense part of the farming is rented out. But there are still, you guys still have some personal animals there, right?
Yeah, I'm still.
Just for the record, Joe said that there's still, all the, all the buildings are still there, so there's all the, that maintenance. That we're addressing, I guess.
Maybe we could just take that last part off and just have, when they cease to reside in the permanent dwelling, it kind of takes care of it all, doesn't it?
Yeah, that'd be better. I'll make a motion, we do that.
All those in, see, can I, can we just voice vote that one if we change the condition?
Yeah, how about I'll read four and five again, just so that we have clear language and then. Then you guys can make a motion for that.
Good.
So we modified conditions four and five. Number four will say that the permit shall expire when Joe and Janine Ingham cease to reside in the permanent dwelling. And five states that the temporary farm dwelling may only be inhabited by immediate family members and their immediate family, to include spouse or children.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval by the temporary farm dwelling with the aforementioned conditions.
Second of that motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah, we can do that one. So Josh Grant.
Aye.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Hafner.
Yes.
Ed Homel.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Alright, so motion, our in favor motion carries. Joe, this, as you stated before, these guys just are recommending bodies, so this will go to the Board of Commissioners and for final approval on our page. You don't need to be present for that at all. Well, staff will take care of it and I will just let you know the outcome of that. That concludes your hearing then.
Thank you.
It looks like Andy is on.
I'm here, can you hear me? Hey, guys. Hello, everyone.
Meeting notice, Martin?
Sure.
For this one?
Yep. Please take notice that an application has been made by Andy and Alan Mallhallen, forty-one East Eighth Street, Suite two fourteen Sioux Falls, South Dakota, for a conditional use permit to build a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district. In Spring Grove Township on the following premises. Section ten, Township one oh one, Range seven, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel thirteen zero one nine zero zero zero. Said applicant standing and making application is as a fee owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at five twenty PM on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given an opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to Environmental Services Department through or South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, or emailed to martinherrick@cohouston.mn.us and must be received by Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Comments in regard to the visit, to the visit. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting.
You want to just explain the project, Andy?
Yeah, my wife and I and our four, four kids. Looking to build a residential dwelling there on the property. And that's really the extent of it. Obviously, all the utilities and things that go along with that as well.
Any questions for Andy here? If not, I guess we could go ahead and go through the findings.
I had one question. Where does Flat Road end? Do you know?
Well, I've done a little bit of research on this because we had the same question when we were looking at purchasing this piece of property. And from the, from the. Information that I've been told and the information I guess I've received, I haven't really received anything other than some verbal conversations that I've had with a few different people some months back. From my understanding is that it ends. Right in front of the. What would be the southeast corner of, of our property. So. Right where the road, I don't know if you have a map of the, of the parcel there, but right where the road takes a hard left. Uh, that is actually the private driveway of Orion Dieters. And so that is where it ends and where his driveway begins. And so it's almost a cul-de-sac dead end right there. And that's where I have a perpetual easement for a driveway onto that southeast corner of our property. So that's my understanding at this point.
Have you talked to the township?
Yes, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name now. He's a bus driver as well. And that's who gave me the most information because he said that that's his understanding and that when he drove bus, that was the end of the road. And that's where he would drop those kids off because that was the end of that road as well.
But it really shouldn't matter as long as you have a permanent easement in place, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Who maintains that road?
The county, right, the, or the township, is that who would maintain that road? I think that was the. The contact at, that I spoke to had mentioned that that's, that they maintained that with their plows, yeah. Now, the driveway is maintained by Orion and I talked to him as well and he said, yes, he maintains it out to that cul-de-sac with his, with his tractor.
Any other questions?
Why does the driveway?
Um. The, well, there's no driveway in place currently. The easement is. Oh, let's see, I have a map of that. I believe that I was sent by Amelia. Let's see here. Here we go. I have the map here. Let me just see, I was, let me see, it's the legal description of that eas, let's see. Yeah, I may have to. I may have to dig to find the map that I have that she sent.
Well, that's not so much for us, but the fire department likes to have be able to meet. You know, if they ever have to go in there or or any other big trucks. They don't have to back out. That's a long driveway. That easement been there a long time?
Um, I believe so. Okay, let's see here. Here's she said there's a perpetual easement on this property. Let me see if it says. Let's see. Easement is perpetual and includes the use and judgment of said surveying land for all purposes of travel, transport. I thought there was a map sheet she sent to that, but I may have to. I I had a a survey, a legal survey done of the property as well, and I think actually they were the ones G Cube did a survey, and they were the ones who found the map for me. Let me see if that's there.
Well, I don't know that we need it for our purposes, but
Okay.
You you should verify that.
Yes, and I know that I did and the okay, here it is. Here's the map, and it was wide enough from what I understood for that. And it looks like it is forty-nine point five feet wide. According to this in that southeast corner.
That's good.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've got another question probably for Martin. Deep slopes. Are they an issue with this property or not?
Well, get into it in the finals, but they're pretty general. I mean, I think the most I could calculate by doing intervals in between is maybe six to seven percent.
So well within the range.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
This one is the proposed use in reference to the to the county land use plan. Staff analysis. When the requirements are met, a conditional use permit provides a mechanism for establishing a dwelling in an agricultural district that conforms to Houston County's land use plan.
All those in favor of the staff analysis on number one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One carries.
The African demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis, housing is a legitimate need.
All those in favor of number two, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Staff analysis with construction and properly constructed and operated S S T S for managing septic, the water quality will not be compromised.
Do you want to explain what S S T S is?
Some surface soil treatment system.
Okay. All those in favor of number three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, the very low percentage of impermeable surfaces and the site's gradual gradients will not substantially contribute to surface water runoff.
Those who agree with the staff analysis and number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious.
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis, the dwellings foundation can be constructed in silty clay soils.
All those who agree with the staff analysis, number five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that's then and that standards have been met. Staff analysis and erosion control plan in section twenty-four, the ordinance will be required additionally, new construction materials and methods have substantially improved energy efficiencies and waste minimizations.
All those who agree with the staff analysis, number six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, the proximity of the parcel to Spring Grove likely lends itself to readily hooking up to gas, electrical and other utilities. Adequate frontage exists with gentle slopes allowing access to Flat Road.
All those who agree with the staff analysis, number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious.
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient on-site parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. The staff analysis, ample space exists for onsite parking and other activities.
All those who agree with the analysis on number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Curious. Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Staff analysis, ample space exists for any traffic congestion during initial construction and day-to-day activities.
All those who agree with this analysis, number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious.
Number ten, that conditional use will not be injurious injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, the parcel has ample room ample room to not impede others.
All those that agree with the analysis, number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number eleven, that the establishment of conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the proposed use for the parcel meets the intent of Houston County's land use plan.
All those who agree with the analysis and number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights such in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, the pro proposed residence and associated activities are expected to cause very minimal disturbance to neighbors.
All those that agree with the analysis and number twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number thirteen, that the density of any proposed resident residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Staff analysis, this activity in the proposed dwelling will not exceed the one residence per forty acre density required.
All those that agree with the analysis, number thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. The proposed activity or sorry, staff analysis, the proposed activity is not commercial.
All those that agree with the analysis and number fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number fifteen, that the site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Staff analysis, the S S T S site erosion plan put in place for the construction and other design considerations will be protective of human health and the empire.
All those that agree with the analysis and number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
I'll second it.
And we do a roll call on that one. I think we did a voice vote on this one.
No, he has no names yet.
Okay, so all those in favor of the findings as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then do you want to read the
Conditions.
Conditions.
Sure. The permitting, the permittees shall comply with all federal, state and local laws and regulations. Second one is the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and reasonable manner to ensure that the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules and ordinances.
Any discussion on the conditions or any thought of adding more?
I'll make a motion to prove the the ass improvement for the new house. These conditions.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
What was that?
Oh, to recommend approval, I guess.
That's what the motion is, right? You recommend approval. Yeah. And you seconded it? Then we'll do a roll call on that one if you can remember our names.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Hattner.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Okay.
So you want to tell them that goes to the county board then, I guess?
Right.
Well, Andy, that you guys are just recommending body has to go more efficient for final approval and so that look like that for us more on our page. You'll have your president for that and we'll let you know the result that afternoon.
Excellent.
Well, good luck with the building if you get it approved.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate your work.
I guess before we get started with this one, we have a crowd. If you guys, the way the mic system is set up, it's designed to help background noise, so if you want, we guys favor.
Reminds me of the fix in these.
So, good morning, people here. The way the the recording system is set up, it's it's fun to block out any noise back here. Um, so if anybody is going to come forward and speak when we get to that point, um, you need to come up and sit in the chairs. And if you guys could sign in, um, they hope us to put these bases, I guess, at at that level. So we'll get started at that time. Yeah, but we'll get started and then with public comments or when the applicants are asked to come forward, um, then you guys can just come and spend some.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and get started here. If you want to read the meeting notice, Martin?
Please take notice that an application has been made by Joseph Root and Craig Kelkey, five twenty-three Enterprise Drive, Caledonia, Minnesota, for a conditional use permit to operate an agriculture-orientated business in an agricultural district in Caledonia Township on the following premises to it. Section twelve Township one oh two, range six, Houston County, Minnesota. Parcels three zero one two eight and triple zero and three zero one two eight zero zero two. Said applicant standing and making application is as is as fee owner of said described lands. The hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at five forty P M on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, or emailed to martin.herrick@co.houston.mn.us and must be received by Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Comments in regard to petition received by this state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting.
Okay, and with that, I guess we'd ask for the applicant's comments to just kind of explain what the project is if you want to come forward. Right there is a mic right up in there.
Right here.
Yep.
Stand or sit.
Just just have a chair.
All right. I'm Craig Hoppy. I am the owner of our enterprises. There's two other owners here tonight, Dylan Burrow and Justin Myers. So what's going on is we all grew our facility where at now, so seventy two, seventy-four by eighty. We started in two thousand sixteen with one employee, which was Dylan Burrow. Started working. Our customer base has grown. It's originally started working on the vehicles, semis and or like jewelry trucking site. And then it kind of evolved into working with local farmers. And then through the time was getting harder and harder to get parts. We started buying trucks to get parts to get the trucks for. It went from one to six employees. Since two thousand and sixteen, we've got twelve vehicles sitting in the back. And we went away from that because our customer base is very large. I brought the last six months of twenty twenty-one of our customer base of who it is. Just about all of the customers on my list are a farmer. There's roughly twenty-one, according to my customer list, that I had around. People that come to our shop a month. That's less than one a day. But we're still, our shop is full. I can't get our parts trucks inside to take apart. It's costing us money for the stuff sitting out there. I don't want it sitting out there. I don't like the look of it sitting out there any more than anyone else. Did it help or lost it? Did it catch us by surprise? It did. You know, originally, we had racking on the side. We started putting our parts indoors. And like I said, the customers, if you kept it our customer, now we have our customer base. And we really feel that it was neat in the area. I mean, this is a great area. I mean, great customers, great people. So that's pretty much the sum of ours. The building, we want to go where we want on Angus, that was forty-four. Like to do a six acre expansion. About two hundred fifty by one seventy-five building. Everything is to be housed inside. There is going to be nothing outside. I like Caledonia. I like this area just as much as anybody else that's here. I don't want it look messy, otherwise I wouldn't even attempting to do this. The building will be constructed by all local people, putting money right back into this area. All the people we hire are from this area, obviously. All our customers just all are from this area. Happy and sad, there's I see there was a list of questions. We've gone through. I gave Marty more answers. Two days ago. I think it's great that everyone had their questions. I think this is a great time for everybody to understand the real reason why we're doing this. And I I think it was a benefit for us for everybody to submit their stuff. I mean, it made us look at some different ideas also. So grew up what we're looking at. Like you guys take a look. I also brought customers here today just to tell you what we're about to. Another one was going, but you got caught in the snowstorm on the way here. Um, another one was going, but you got caught in the snowstorm on the way here. So. That's.
Okay. Any questions right off the bat? Would these guys are up in front here?
Hey, great, quick question. What exactly do you guys do? Are you, is it fixer machines inside the main?
Yeah, so. We do everything from bodywork, semis, cars, trucks. Everything. Where. We've been getting into some of the, oh, what's A? They go, what's A? Uh, most people go, oh, it's a piece of equipment. Uh, forwarding to the state of Minnesota. Get a farm, like a semi grain truck, farm play even on. Pickup truck. Or in Minnesota, that is A. That's why they're giving you a farm plate, so you don't have to pay tax. We are working on. Arm, but I consider that. If it wasn't for the trucks, the grain trailers. Perhaps won't. Come out of the, it's tough. That's all part of it.
You said you do bodywork. Did you do engine overhaul and?
We do.
Replacement, transmission?
Yeah, and we, we also do, Dylan could answer that. We do warranty for SEMA.
Good.
Craig, you just wanted to repeat what he said. Um, so we get an.
Okay, we, we do warranty work for SEMA equipment, New Holland. That.
John Dear.
And yes, John Dear. Other warranty paid or bodywork, well, I mean, we've gone from. Comlines to tractor roll stones. But yes, we also do semi trucks, grain trucks. I have a picture the other day on my phone that. Those all grain truck, we had two grain trucks in the shop. You know, this.
When you're painting, you've got solvents and stuff in there and that's, how do you dispose of that or what, what protocol do you have for that?
I'll let Dylan talk real quick because he takes personal things.
Okay. The question is just how do you dispose of solvents or the fumes and stuff from painting or?
There's probably. The fumes, uh. Builders that are supplied to us are ninety-eight percent. Do you, uh, particulate and ore? Which meets the P A, that's the highest built to be actually yet. The big, and as far as solvents and material waste, these P V S pumps, everything is hardened in the cup and. They don't want all the extra solids.
Yeah.
How about your used oil, antifreeze, stuff like that?
We just put antifreeze that all gets put into containers, barrels, and. Right now, we don't have an issue with it. When the new shop is up, your new location, then we're going to have company come in and remove all of that. At this point, we burn all the waste oil or heat in the building.
All of the new facility be heated. What are you thinking there?
So through the years, uh, we've learned, we've liked, uh, overhead radiant heaters a lot better, a lot more efficient and, uh. Your own break.
So that'll be a natural propane.
Correct.
So your waste oil and if it's basically the same as a garage and you miss fixing cars. Right.
What's your total acreage? Is that too long?
There we have nineteen acres.
Nineteen acres and your proposal is for six acres? What do you mean by six acre parcel? What do you mean by that?
It's just the six acre, we're gonna, so, uh, what we're asking for is six acres so we can get. Turn.
That's where you're.
Building area.
Basically, you're going to have a six acre impermeable surface? Is that what you're considering? Okay. Um, you mentioned Seal Cody and Angus Drive. I see the township isn't in favor of that. Have you? Discuss that with the township?
We were at a township meeting last night. See, Doug. Is here, um. Anyway, they want, it, it, it. We're fine with, they, they wanted to do chloride. On the gravel and I was fine with that too. We would maintain. The gravel or if they said, hey, we want to do the chip seal, we would maintain the chip seal too. Either way, I was fine with us.
So are you anticipating a lot more traffic on the road or is this going to be just like truck in, truck out? It's not going to be constant? Traffic is just going to be when you're working on the trucks. Is that correct or no?
Correct. It's, you know, we have jobs that could be, one day we've had jobs in there that have been over a year. Like I said, I ran kind of a data, I got the list. If you want to go through the list of my customers of the last six months of last year. And. Twenty-one of them. Plus six employees will be coming in and out and. You know, the one, one of the comments was, well, it's going to make it a lot busier. We're already an established business. Them customers are already coming through that way, coming to our facility. We're not. Really bringing more customers. Customers we have are pretty good through there is how we're looking.
And as far as like a parking lot for trucks and, you know, that was kind of in the comments too. That's not what you're really anticipating, is it?
No, it's not. Everything, like I said again, will be inside. We're going to have parking in the back. And if you want to show them, can they join up?
Sure, yeah. You were talking about park on the west side. I read, read your proposal in here, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I know you have two access points, Highway forty-four and Angus Drive.
Correct.
Are you going to maintain both of them or what's, what's the plan?
See.
Angus Drive. So you're going to eliminate the?
I would.
You would, okay. Sorry.
Distances from Highway forty-four, you're.
Two seventy-five, gee, that's leading to the.
Yeah, it's not far, I mean. So as far as in, increased traffic, can you? That's right, that's. Please, but it's percentage wise, you'd be, you'd have to really, really, really run a lot of traffic through before you increase traffic on Highway forty-four.
Do you have a water plant? The plant's a new area dirt because it's still a pretty good size.
Can I bring this up to you?
Sure.
Pretty, now who does the, that's your elf, elf or somebody around there or something?
And Justin talked to, uh, Samuel.
We, as, we can get into it more with, there will be, by virtue of the building being larger than a acre, they will be required to do an M P C A. Plan for stormwater.
Obviously.
And it has a lot of meetings, requirements that go along with it.
This is H and R Associates.
H and R Enterprises.
Enterprises. That's, that's separate for.
A hundred percent. That's the, going out there.
Thank you.
So just to make sure, because I have some of the comments, you guys have not, it'd be like a trucking house, right?
And, and.
It's just going to be there.
Bring that up, I. So, going through this, when we were reading. Try to stop. One, I, I, right, I understand where a lot of the comments came from. Cause it was just Craig Houghton and Joe Root and the person outside looking in, they didn't understand. We did, because we, we knew, you know, so I totally get what they were. The, the questions they had were, and like I said, I cleared out jewelry trucking, there's no trucking hub, it's not going to be a trucking hub, jewelry trucking staying where it's at. After kind of.
So might as well get rid of it, get that out of the way right now so we can keep going.
And I, like I said, I totally understand the questions. I would have been confused too if I would have been able to, I would have.
Well, that can all be addressed in the conditions. It can be a stipulation of how the thing runs and there'll be some conditions, you know, and that would solve some of that too. Any other questions of the applicants here right off the bat? We can always ask them to come back up if we have more later.
I think. So you guys grew from one to six now and so you have, you plan on expanding from there with the new facility? Unlike the police place?
So, that being said, when, when we started to grow. We were doing. We were fixing old semis. And reselling them. Now we have our customer base, so we're kind of maintaining where we're at because our customers are here now. We're not, we haven't been buying and rebuilding and nothing, uh. You see like down by our scale two that we have, there's been nothing for sale for. For quite some time. Just, we haven't been building and selling them because we have so many loyal customers from this area coming to us.
Yep.
So you're not going to be going around buying junk semis and hauling them in there and tearing them apart and? Stuff like that consistently?
Not consistently, no. Will we still buy? Self-imbust trucks, not like we were in the past. But like I said, we only had, we only have twelve in since twenty sixteen. So it's not like it's. Been accumulating and I can show you the price of trucks now if you're going for, for junk ones. That's not. No.
I guess it doesn't matter kind of what the plan is. The main, main thing is that all will be done inside, whatever, whatever you're doing. You know, it would be different if you're going to start collecting things outside, uh, there. That's.
Well.
Definitely an issue.
Some of them will be outside. I mean, if you're going to buy trucks for parts, you're not going to put those in your shop.
So we're going to bring them in the shop. We're going to take them apart. We're going to categorize it. Any of the parts that are bent and no good are getting out of there immediately. Well, you know, the what, right now the weather holds us up. We have no room in the shop. We. Just so many things having their hands tied.
One of the comments said, nobody wanted the junkyard, but the way I understand it, what's going to be around there temporarily, you guys are willing to fence. Is that right?
You know.
Do you be willing to burn and fence?
We would, yeah, we're, we're.
That might cover, that might cover you a lot better.
You know, we look at it. These. We live with these people too. I don't want a bad name for my business. I want people to be coming to my business, not, that business not going. Oh my God, these guys are, I don't, I don't want that. I want to work with everybody and it was, actually, I'd like to, want to hear what some of their ideas are too. I mean, we're open to any.
Well, with that, maybe we should kind of open it up to, to the comments from, from.
If I could, I think this may help. Greg brought in comments to me, which I put together my staff analysis, uh, right up that you guys saw with the fifteen comments and stuff like that. They brought in a response yesterday. So some of what can you see are. It's an ongoing evolving kind of a document because based on the things. So I guess if you want, I could read some of the highlights. So people here will get more, a little more information about, you know, what's, what's starting to evolve. And one of the, the first one they had is adequate measures will be taken to provide off-street parking load spaces, which matches up to what we're saying. The conditional use, use permit is for six acres for one seventy-five by two fifty building with an interior concrete floor, exterior will be. Concrete apron, gravel parking covering up three acres. And this, this will be available too. I'm not, you know, just, so surface area of the parking provides space for six to, to nine employees in their cars. And then on average, one to two customers per day. On the west side, there will be additional parking spaces available on the apron and on the gravel area. Gravel surfaces will also provide space for unloading and turning around. Um, all parts and equipment will be housed inside the steel building. Next one, the facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion, traffic hazards, which may result from proposed use. Based on records traveled, as was discussed, traffic will average one to two customers per day in addition to the six to nine employees. They have, they discussed the offer to the township to chip seal to mitigate concerns. Township have declined. And again, we reiterate, reiterate that it's not Joe Root trucking and it's just limited to their exclusive activities. Uh, the next item, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for, for purposes already committed. What, one of the key things that they're bringing up here is that the older buildings will all be torn down. They're going, they're going to raise those, they, they will get rid of those. The materials and demolition material will all be taken to the landfill. Nothing will be buried on site. Nothing will be burned. Uh, acreage is adequate to support the building and be large enough to house all equipment and they will. Reserve tones and colors. Uh, the building height, this was one of our questions was, because thirty feet is our limit, is twenty-eight foot nine. Sidewalls will be eighteen foot nine and the door heights will be sixteen foot. All parts and equipment will be housed indoors with all service work provided indoors, uh, following all federal, state, local. Regulations that go along with it. As they noted, undeveloped acreage will be, uh, seeded down with alfalfa. Given that, next item is given that all equipment will be indoors. There are no plans to construct any screening or fencing, but it sounds like you're willing to. Okay, good. Outdoor lighting will be facing downward and towards the building. Um, and then there obviously are limits on this signs too. And, you know, you understand.
They're not going to be lit, lit upside down. We're not having lights all over our lot.
Hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven A M before P M. At the, see, we've got the, the traffic flow there. Site erosion plan is working with the Southern Water Conservation District. And very importantly, they'll also agree with the M P C A for developing methods because. There will be hydraulic calculations based on the surface that comes off those building, the flow that's coming out, the storm events. Whether you need a rain garden or you need some sort of structure to infiltrate that and dissipate that energy. Cause it is a silvic place soil. It's going to take some work, but it certainly can be done. In terms of the next item, adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent, control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise and vibration. As they noted, all equipments will be indoor and service will be done by that. And if they get over certain limits, are you using a spray booth? And you're actually painting, you're painting back. So you're, and new, new spray booths are, are a lot of work to set up.
They're a lot of work and they're tough. I assume as of now with those carbon filters.
One, one key thing that I'd certainly discuss with people too is to realize no discharges on the roof and like we talked about the other day. So you don't have a discharge on the roof. The rain doesn't concentrate it and it ends up in a ditch. You got to capture that and keep it before it gets there. So. That they'll certainly follow laws and see building will be further insulated, will cut down on the noise, they said. Any orders of fumes will be ventilated with carbon filters, gravel surfaces will be maintained with chloride. Um, and they would extend to Angus Drive if the township allows. Outdoor lighting will be facing downward, limiting any impact to surrounding properties. As noted, no plans for outward signs, things like that. And then the last item was the intensity of the proposed commercial development is not created in the intensity of the surrounding area. That was a tough one. Um, the activity proposed is commercial, historical records that show that a portion of it was previously used for commercial business. The H and R Enterprise is a collision and repair facility catering to the egg community around Caledonia, Houston County and surrounding areas. As they noted, H and R customer records show that the business predominantly serves egg related customers.
Well, current well, will that interfere with the location of the building or?
No, it, we're, so I, I've talked to, uh.
From, from?
He said they can. Case it. So it'd be. In a parking lot or.
Yep.
so we're, we plan on taking out.
So why is Joe Root's name on the application if he's not having anything to do with this?
Joe Root and I own it together, and unfortunately, even here tonight, he had another arrangement that was planned. He came last night to the township meeting, but they left, uh, last night actually.
You'll have a restroom in the building?
Yes.
That, uh, the house on the corner there, that'll be torn down or just the whole buildings?
All the buildings will be raised.
Well, let's, um, maybe take a break from you guys for a bit and let's see. So just say you're from?
Do you, one, one question quick. Do they do routine maintenance too?
They do, yes, um, not for me, but they do.
Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, you know, whenever oil need change, Bob, I mean, okay, thanks.
Then I guess we'd ask for any public comments on this application?
Uh, Mike Jurgensen, I'm about a quarter mile off the road from the post.
There, close guy lived just north of the old property.
Want to just present what you have in mind?
We've got all this field, we've, we've been about this several times, and feel that all us that are there that, that join us for our homes are there, where we live, we build our homes. We're all, that is a good saying. When I, when I first moved there, they wanted, uh, I thought about having my business out there and telling me what zone was, how it was. And that it did not fit to be, be out there. Feel that this will be, you know, dangerous to be a flight or home there. Enjoy our homes and our things, the culture has to be built. Um, this is a strong area that is agriculture, residential, this permit for, for this building with grass. We have a lot of extra grasses there, turning traffic, it's very dangerous, I would turn on, there are turning lanes there. We also have township road year round. Coming off from seventy-six, coming back past lakes, and then both also coming out of forty-four. Think it will also give us excessive dust noise, like pollution, Jay brakes and trucks. Also feel this development will be much more intense, obviously with almost, I think some of those acres of building, which is far larger than anybody that has anything around here. The height is very high, coverage is very large, and I will go by of course, the highway, I have a very, very nice pool, pool catch, and that is why I built my house the way I did. This will be right smack in that, that due point. Oh, it is our opinion that current business, as it is run, we've seen, got there. Is definitely a commercial business, I mean, it's, it's not a farm-based business, it's a commercial business. Does not fit into what is intended for the zone, you know, that's seen as an egg business. As we get into the, is this part of it and what the statutes were designed for and shows was that it's designed in a division three of the zone. There is a level two home occupation, is what you need to have to get the condition used to be in the country to have a egg-based business, that is supposed to be occupied by the owner of the business, is intended to assist them to have a business on the property. Uh, what, then do some farm-type work. It also limits the building size to five thousand square feet. You know, and, and that's means the whole scope of the zoning, the way the zoning is written, rules that were given to us when we built. This is not it, and without that. This does not have any, any enough information, any sound decisions on as far as water, as far as pollution, as far as light, as far as traffic, you know, it's just not, not enough there when you're in this field for us. That is our biggest, our, our concern, it just does not fit into the neighborhood. There we go, drive, people are coming to see what, how many students have spent on tourism, trying to find people here.
You know, you look at number nine here, it's our opinion that the current business is a commercial business, this is going in an agricultural district. So where do you draw the line? You let a pharmaceutical company come in and say, well, we sell drugs to farmers, we're classified as agriculture, or some bands, well, we sell lots of bands to farms, you know, I mean, this, this is actually a commercial business going in an agricultural district, is our opinion of it. So that's kind of where we stand. That, you know, the commercial business is long in the industrial parks in a commercial zone area.
Building that size. Uh, I don't think we've seen it on farms, but you do see building that size in industrial parks.
Well, one thing, some, a lot of the egg buildings now, the freestyle barns and stuff, there's at least that much roof on those, I mean, large farming has changed a lot in the last twenty years. They still have a roof, I mean, it's the same, same thing, you know, I see what you're saying with the cows, that's egg, yeah. Were you at all satisfied with anything that they presented, I mean, as far as ways to mitigate some of your concerns? Because they, they, I mean, we have to be honest, they, they're certainly trying to, to approach this in a careful way, you know, as far as the water runoff and it sounds like the traffic might not be quite the same as what it was thought at first either, I mean.
They also said they're an expanding business, so. So with that, traffic comes.
But there, there can be limits put on to, you know, what they can do too, so that would change some of the concerns too. Is a possibility.
How do you feel this property would compare to what's currently about a mile down the road with the Zinke operation?
No, I don't have to look at points or at heights, no, honestly, it's, it's, it's not, it's been there forever. It is owner occupied.
It's not in between our homes.
It's not right at, at the home, right, right out our windows and, and we're, we're very careful with that highway now, I have side driving, just like I need to, how dangerous it is, I don't let it be on the time. Way to roll there at, uh, printing marks, yes, it was. Some more and more traffic issues there. That is very dangerous. I was wanting to help this out there, and that, uh, size, that's fine, that's a good idea.
What did you say you did to mitigate that, was you, you, you built a, what, a second? And, and did one of, comes off Angus, and there's one on forty-four as well, I see.
Did coming out forty-four, that's probably a lot of noise from. But when you're coming from Caledonia, heading toward Soca, to make a left turn, because I live out there, it's very dangerous, I'm always watching it right here, everybody passes in that right hand turn lane, which is illegal to do. And they, they're picking up speed, gonna wanna pass right in that zone there. And if you get more traffic that's already there, I think we're gonna have some issues there.
I have two accesses to my house also, traffic, you know, you can judge it now with, uh, I'm coming from the north, when I come from town. Um, to take the first Angus Drive in, or if I can close by and traffic goes by, I can pull it behind on my east entrance. But in that, that sales barn, that's, that's been there forever. The livestock started out, it's a life, or was a livestock, all the way until you kind of got away from that. And that evolved into something else, that he's got it now, it's, it's something else.
You know, um, so you guys are kind of okay with Zinkies being there, I mean, that seems like that's as commercialized, but these guys.
Excepted those conditions. That building, that facility was there, so it does, I don't feel that I have right to say anything about it. But I just, I did exactly how you told me. Was there, and then I followed those rules, that I was, cannot have a business out there, you have a home out there. Except for that, that's where we went with it. It's not my place to say that. A business that's been there longer than I have, that my place is always that they happen to change.
But somebody must have allowed that at one point.
Well, it's at least, yeah. That, that, the sale barn's pre-zoning, but the Zinke business is after zoning, so I'm not sure what exactly happened there.
But that's kind of the point, you get a big commercial building, it's made in the middle of our residence or our homes. And that's subject to change. I mean, sales barn was a livestock. And, uh, now it's a what?
And it does kind of an ice art with all the stuff that never gets moved, I mean, it sits there for how long, you know? That doesn't look good and we don't want that, and they proposed that they would not do that in our neighborhood, which is fine. As far as this old zoning, they had an old TV repair shop there forty years ago, they repaired a couple TVs. So is that, is that grandfathered in as a commercial zoning permit still, you know?
I think it'd have to be revisited anyway, if something. Yeah, and it's, that, that was too small for anything to continue there anyway, really. It was only a small area, the way I understand it.
That didn't really change the landscape though.
I don't have my book here, is commercial buildings allowed in the egg district? Will the use determine whether it's allowed or not?
Well, what they're trying to do is an agricultural, cultural-oriented business under fourteen-three, which is, uh,
Sure.
Under the ordinance, look at the ordinance.
The business group in the agriculture district. Page seventy four. On page seventy three, additional use. Uh, page seventy four, it says. Culture related, because certain, there's not something that gets every, that's a conditional use for it. Set conditions and restrictions. It says for general repair and installation services for agriculture equipment. And you know, it's like what comes first, chicken or the egg? I mean, if you're gonna be in egg business, you're gonna be dealing with the public, you're gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, so. Uh, so the way you address this is, and these people are sincere, I have no way to question that. Mr. Melkey, uh, you know, and we've spent a lot of time responding to concerns. And, and they're willing to do what it takes to make this work to be good neighbors. And, but it's the deal with it has come forward by the board is set. You know, what, what conditions? If, if Mr. Wang's concerned about a water runoff, we, we've gone to Mr. To the, to the water shoot people, Mr. Scan. And if we need to put a worm up, we, we worm it. That's how you deal with those concerns. If, if Mr. Wells, who lives across the road, is concerned about, uh, something being outside, he doesn't want it, you, you, you do something with screening or whatever it might be. I mean, it's, it can be compatible. This is not, it can't be compatible. So, uh, right now, there's a lot of traffic on Highway forty four. They live right on forty four. Uh, we're not, these gentlemen are not gonna increase the traffic. Full market. Uh, it, it's a matter of, nobody wants to, these people are all good people. Nobody's saying that, that they're not good people here, but it's, it's compelled. But these gentlemen want to do, there's no place else to put up. There's no place with, in, in town here, if you want the area, want the progress. And, and they need the, the, where the facility is. Now, one thing I would like to clarify, because there's confusion about ownership and title. The property is owned by Mr. Melkey and Mr. Root. They operate under H&R Enterprises. I posed a question to, to Mr. Herrick today because, uh, these two young men that are in the business, Justin and Dylan are part of H&R Enterprises. They want to have this in the enterprise thing ultimately, because they, they're the future. And, uh, so, but it's H&R Enterprises is business, but Mr. Melkey and Mr. Root bought the property. Don't know where this is going, but the plan is, is that it, it, it's gonna be H&R Enterprises. But they gotta follow all the same regulations. It's just a name only difference, just to explain that out there. Thank you.
I understand, I, I, I do not, I'm just, all facts, I just, I understand if you have certain people who's getting behind them, but if it means that you move us on. You know, it's, we're gonna put a road down, the high, rather for implementation.
Maybe you'd have to, we'd have to have them address that. I don't know.
Absolutely. And then, uh, uh, you know, we still, our, our opinion is that this doesn't comply. It does not, it is a commercial business. And then we're gonna come back to subdivision three of the level two home occupation, where it has to be home occupied in the maximum five thousand square feet, if I want, building out. That's page one, we need to buy of the zone.
Craig, can you address that question on, um, no interest in building in Caledonia or up where you're at now? Or like capacity to do that, et cetera, that they were asking? If you can, and recorded.
We're still.
So give me my.
Glad you guys commented. I really, true. Every national question, you guys, uh, virtual members. It was hard for me to really.
Uh, yeah, just, they were asking on the expansion in Caledonia, actually, up where you're, is, is that a possibility?
So Joe Rhodes and Snowpack own land around us. Snowpack has stuff that's really nice and flat. Everything else is mountain. To dig that out and all of what we is rolling straight on the hill. There's, it's pretty much, they've only ate it because they can't put nothing else there. That's the issue. So we're done there. There's nothing else.
They, they said they could possibly put it back somewhere further. Apparently, I, I don't know, who was it mentioned that?
Um, I think what they're talking about is would be, oh, of smoke packs. New warehouse or their, their shop that they are now, but they are. They have talked, uh, to Joe, whatever bits and pieces that they are going to put some there, actually. Snowpack, not us, so.
But in your new site, there's, there's not some way you can move that further away from the highway?
Two hundred and two hundred and seventy-five feet, I believe, from the highway back as it is.
Okay.
I'm, I'm willing to. Yeah, we're, we're willing to.
But if it's just the fact that somebody has to look at that, and once you tear off buildings down, that's pretty wide open. So if it was 500 feet back, I mean, your bill may be, there'd be tall on most of them. You're gonna see it. I mean, you're never gonna hide that building.
And one thing I was, I drove by the site yesterday, I think it was, as you come off Angus Drive and go to the west here, it does drop down. So if you did get further out, you'd be lower on the horizon. So the building would drop down for your view. I mean, it would drop, it was further back. I mean, that would lower it from eyesight, because it's, it's lower as you go west on the south.
Um, we were trying to get as level as we could because first off, a lot of them trucks do get stuck pretty easy. And you want them pretty flat if there's a ice storm or like this evening. For safety reasons, pushing trucks around. We're kind of, I don't, for getting that matter, I prefer it to be flatter than.
Yeah, it's better, it's better on top.
So what conditions are you people looking for us to put on this? Or what would you like to see?
Obviously, we don't want to see, you know, I, I, I hate to go to, yes, we haven't really talked about that. Let's see if there were something that actually fits in like our homes. We'd love, love to build a house up and move in by us.
I'd welcome to the neighborhood.
Oh, it's a new building.
It's a really big house.
I mean, I'm, I'm honestly, guys, very well. I'm even open to making the building smaller. I, I'm fine with that. I want, I want, you know, where you guys are at, and trying, I wanna work with you guys.
Could you make it multi-al elevation? Certain parts don't need to be as high. I'm just going.
That's a good question. Um.
I obviously hire. Sorry, I, multiple, multiple heights. In other words, the whole thing wouldn't.
You know, I, I work with Tim and Tom Kells, like I said, they, they do all my building. All, all our stuff is all, we don't go outside area. I would have to talk to them. I I think that all sorry now, I don't see why.
One of, one of the ideas where I was going with it is by virtue of your roof. So if you had multiple elevations, I mean, roof doesn't have to be quite as high, although you got, you got tall equipment. You know, you're, you're, you're gonna still have that, but being able to break things up. That might, might be able to change your vertical elevation.
That's, uh, that's fair, it's, yeah.
I don't.
Good idea. I, I, I'm open to any suggestions. I mean, that only helps us. I think that's why we're here today. I mean, anything that's brought up, we look at as possible.
As far as the, uh, this being a permitted use, the way I read this, uh, possibilities of what can be done in the egg district for, but not limited to it. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty open what can be done. And this, this is, whether we like to admit it or not, this is ag-related. Most farm, a lot of farms have semis now. It's just kind of the fact, you know? And pickups, we all got those, but, um, what I'd propose is that maybe it's, we could have you guys do some discussing among yourselves and maybe kind of table us for this, this month, if that'd be okay, for everybody?
Yes. So would it only be working on trucks with white plates, you know, with fire plate on? No commercial trucks, no commercial things. They, they have farm plates right on to the trucks.
Yeah.
And, and the bigger trucks. Oh, so would be, no, nobody shop for any outside cars and even that was not our.
I, we don't have the ability to limit what business can do. I mean, I, it's either commercial or it's not.
Yes. And, and, and putting conditions on just give. That's why it's.
Would you prefer that or what do you, what do you think?
I'm, I'm, I can't, you know, we're trying to all speak the same, but.
Yeah. I, yeah. I'm not sure what'd be gained by that. I mean, is somebody gonna stand by the doorway and see which has the right plates on them?
Forceability would be. It's going to be an agricultural business, not a commercial business. Yeah. That would have, yes, that would have to be from what I've read and understanding about it, to consider it as an agricultural business. Otherwise, it's.
Well, what then, we'll get into the point, what percent has to be agricultural? You know, a hundred percent, yeah, I'd like a, how do you, how do you, how do you enforce that? That seems, I don't know, to say eighty percent of their business is ag, so then we're gonna say it's ag. We, I don't think we can make that kind of determination.
We certainly have done a lot of looking to try to find an example of other activity that would match this, trying to make a comparison of some sort. Boy, we're striking out. I'm not saying that's against you.
No, I.
I was just trying, trying to find some parallel in something and it's tough.
Got a question back there? That's had a question back there.
Yeah, you wanna come forward?
Yeah. Yes. I just got some comments. Um, I know what Joe is here is referring to is, uh, the general. I was, uh, probably somewhat, uh, responsible for drafting that language in the ordinance back, uh, quite a few years. When it comes to the general and what it's, what, uh, some of the things that were listed in there was like the antihemics tanks were getting shoved out of town. They had a place to go, they had to have a place to go along with fertilizer plants, that sort of stuff. And at that time, we drafted this here to make that happen because we couldn't lose that there, there's something that this, uh, the egg community need. Um, general farming, it says. The reason we put that in there was, and the general A was for repairs. There was a lot of mom's hot type, little garages or people wanted a little side to make extra money. We do have those already permitted in the county. Um, that's why it was put in there. And along with, with the type two, what, uh, Joe is here is alluding to. We wanted to make sure that they didn't go beyond that scope, that they stayed small and that they can still service the neighbors, that sort of thing. And, um, to look at something like this, and then Marty said it, there is nothing, you're gonna find nothing with this type of scope that's gonna fit in what they're proposing. Um, you know, there are already, I guess I heard, uh, and I looked at their, um, findings there. They were looking at six employees and I guess now the state was made, you're going six to nine. So I mean, this thing is growing as we're, we're discussing this thing. And I think that's where the concerns of these, uh, these, uh, adjoining landowners are. There's, um, you know, you're looking at a building this size. There's a lot of environmental concerns that are gonna go with that thing. Um, you're talking a lot of rough space, a lot of, uh, impervious ground, they're gonna be sitting there and all that's gotta come down on top of these gentlemen. Um, I think, you know, what, uh, when I looked at the application, I think there's a whole lot of information that's gonna have to be, uh, gathered and, and generated to address a lot of these concerns. And, and some of which you might probably are not, you know, you get, uh, the past rains we've had where it's coming down, you know, a couple, three inches in a matter of an hour, well, twenty minutes. I mean, that's a flush and that could have an awful effect on these, uh, these people, so. But I just wanted to give a little history on the reason on that general agricultural, why it was left that way. It was not, to me, it was not intended when we drafted that to come up with a size like this, that it's gonna fit a commercial bench like this in my, in my.
I hear is we should change your ordinance.
Well, we'd have to change, uh, definitely what you have sitting there, that's the way it's rolled to, yeah, to include something like this.
I think, um, I think you said, uh, that farming has changed a lot. I don't think anybody, um, twenty years ago would have imagined that so many farms would have semis on them. I mean, they, there's gravity boxes and tractors that they used to use now. Semis are the way they go. I mean, twenty years ago, you wouldn't expect it, dairy farms to be so big. Uh, you can't, um, nobody has the crystal ball, um, to say, well, this is where this is gonna be forever and ever and ever. I mean, and even out in the country, I guess you come to expect having machinery, especially in the fall and spring. Um, it's just what, partially what you get.
You're talking year round then. That's what, that changes that, that, that fall and spring turns into year round.
It's an increased traffic, um, part of your presentation was talking about tourism. Um, I don't see, uh, traffic increasing as much with these guys being out there as traffic increases with tourism. Um, at least with tourists, at least with these guys, everybody knows where they're headed with the tourists. You never know if they're gonna turn left or right, or if they're gonna stop right in front of you to look at something. Um, so I have the traffic part, um, Highway forty four is busy, it's gonna be busier forever.
What's going on in telechips? What do they have to say?
Yeah, just a few questions for the last thing, they came up with it, just all the questions that we have.
Could you come up here so we can hear you a little better, please?
Dusty Dan and Mike. I'm just into concerns with everything. I work him across. I drive by their minimum five.
Do you give your name, please?
Thank you all. Yeah. Spoke with Dan, Rusty. I did myself both these guys, Mike. Known for a long time, good people. We had a few concerns. Craig addressed all the concerns. And Dusty, we're up to it last night, we also.
I miss though, working across. I drive by there five times a week. Next, it's more like seven, possibly eight. It's called five for sure.
Drive by where?
The site they're proposing.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I prefer not to see junkyard either. No difference in the rest of them. If you look at my place, I keep neat clean. That's what I do. That's that's what I like to see. Don't see these guys. Not doing that either. Where I know of them, I think they're gonna stand with them and back up with the town. I mean, can I say they're definitely not gonna do it, but we can say it. Can't, can't, I don't know. Cause I don't know yet any big issues or any. Three concerns that is the. What they're actually gonna do. And I should say too, what they're actually gonna do and.
So you okay with where the drivers gonna be put now?
Yeah, we had, we had a problem that was. I'll think of that there. Just enjoy the traffic. I think the problem.
If if this isn't. This, I don't know how to say it. If this doesn't go through, where do they get their repairs done? Where do they get their repairs done now? Oh, I don't know if it's your answer. I'm just bringing the question up. There would be some benefit to some of the farmers around, I assume. Shouldn't say assume, I guess, but. If they if they don't have this. Where do they get the repairs done? If you gotta, you know, it's you're in the harvest season, then I don't know. Very goes out. Where do they get that done? Where they get it fixed? Or they need to overhaul an engine or replace an engine? I mean, whatever goes on. They need someplace to get that done. But you're saying that's gotta have that, but not in my backyard.
They currently have their business going. As far as that goes, they're working on something.
Didn't say last night, just a question about their parts and stuff they have to do inside. One example we gave was they have. Some trucks up back. They want to parts. So one's got a good motor. Thirty thousand dollar motor sitting outside there. There's no place for them inside. I don't want that thirty thousand dollar motor sitting outside. They put that in some of these trucks. We can get one on board. They can get that, but it sits outside too long.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone know anything about that truck shop that's initeson?
Freeze man's?
Yeah. Is that in the village or is that in the?
It's in the city.
It is. Okay.
So what you guys are all built in an egg district? What do you have farms there?
Yeah, we got farmland also.
Okay, you're you're all every resident, this is is an egg district.
Yeah, yes.
Who came to put a hog operation across the road from there?
Probably won't like that as much, but. That's what we come back to is.
I think you should table it for now and get together and put some conditions in here that everybody could work with. And maybe come back in thirty, sixty days and review it to see how everything could fall in place.
That's kind of where I was going to.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is there a is there a timeline on? Which can happen on this report becomes an act of us up.
Sixty days, isn't it? Maybe days or sixty. What's that?
The other thing though, before you get that, is there anybody else that wants to comment?
Hey, Casey Clu. I do work for the city of California, but not here, not representing the city. So it's one clear year. Just conferences and we've got a lot of band of farm around Syria. Again, I kind of reiterate a lot of what these guys said. They got a great business. It's really like keeper here. So, you know, not coming up here with her feelings, but the one that keeps catching me is. Like these guys have said, it's not permitted use. You look under the conditional use that they're proposing. This is, and then you look at the agriculture use. It is a hundred percent agricultural livestock, crop. Says we built this for that. Talk about commercial truck repairs agriculture. That's that's my biggest concern. Excuse me. Then if you look towards changing the ordinances to allow this. You just set a new bar where you draw the line for future proposals.
One thing that we could mention too is the alternative was proposed to to make that res on it to commercial. But there's not much control. Once you resolve the whole parcel of the commercial, you kind of lose control of it. The one thing that's an advantage of going with the conditional use, you can put the conditions on there and just do them one at a time, you know, so. Nobody can just take that parcel and just take off with it and build more. This would be a one. Each one's looked at individually. And that is kind of an advantage for the colony, I think, to do it that way. Instead of just carving out a chunk and say, this is commercial all of a sudden, it wasn't before. Then you kind of lose control entirely.
Right, right. This is the only only opportunity to set that up.
Right. And the whole the whole idea of this thing is so people can come like you're doing to 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 say their piece, you know.
Conditions are for.
Right. And I I would propose if you guys could stomach it, you all sit down at a table sometime and with these guys, could you do that? And just kind of maybe see if you can, you know, talk about it. You might not agree, but it's it's worth a try, maybe. Cause it's.
Maybe changing the building a little bit like Martin said, I mean, tweak it something, maybe we could all come together or something.
You're the neighbors, you know, so.
Just a big question, is there. There any way that you guys will accept this? I mean, because we can table this for sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty days, whatever the legal limit is. If you've never been accepted, no matter what the conditions and why are we gonna table?
You work for the city of Caledonia. Can't there be another part of an industrial park in Caledonia that they could use? They've told me, you know, we went and visited these guys because they said this was gonna be a problem. But you know what? The problem is. You've got an industrial park, but you don't have room for something this size. But to keep that in Caledonia would be a really great for Caledonia and the business. I mean, let's let's be honest about it. They don't want to really move out of Caledonia. They wanna. They want to be here and they they want to be in the community. They want to be part of this community.
Correct, and that's definitely.
Well, sure.
I'm trying very careful, careful here. Like I said, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the city. I do know this one pretty well. And yeah, you know, new industrial could be could be added in the city. That's if they can find parts of the purchase.
See, I think that should be up to the city to purchase that. Because to tell you the truth, this is what this whole thing is about. The city, you go to the city of Rushford. If somebody wants to build, do a business in the city of Rushford. They're gonna walk right in and they're gonna help you any way they can. Well, you know, these guys aren't getting any help from Caledonia at all. Well, we can see it though, you know.
Going there, you gotta look at their position. They don't want a junkyard either.
No.
But they don't have any room to have anything. But I mean. It has to be outside. Their buildings full. They want to keep their business going, so they have to continue buying parts, you know, trucks to get parts and stuff, but. So they're almost forced into making a junkyard, you know, then people say, well, build out. Front of, you know, towards forty four and that industrial park, but it's so steep. It it would be ridiculous. If you if somebody said, put your house there, you'd laugh at them. So I, their hands are tied and part of what we're supposed to do is to help this county.
Hmm, be a lot of tax dollars there too. We're gonna lose out on, I mean, that's.
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, the city of Caledonia will get all the tax dollars if they can keep them in an industrial park. That's why the cities do that and set them up. That's why this whole thing and, you know, you're putting this, trying to put it out in the country, because the city isn't doing anything. You know.
With their last resort.
Yeah.
Well, you think the townships are gonna end up getting about seventeen thousand dollars in tax dollars. The county's gonna get around forty five thousand dollars worth of tax and the school's gonna get sixty five hundred. So that budget is generating tax dollars.
Why are they gross?
It's sad that they're not near. You go up to Wabashaw right now, there's gas stations. Ten, twelve acre gas stations that are just shutting down and walking away. If those guys had anything like that near here, they could put up the whole thing. And it would be cheap. You know. This doesn't make any sense. Yeah. You know, we're gonna study our land use plans sometime this spring now. That's something that probably should be brought up.
Well, this thing with the general farming agriculture, we could maybe tweak that.
That's right.
And, you know, so we don't have this all the time.
That's right.
And for right now, the way the ordinances are, we our hands are probably tied.
Yep, that's right.
And until we change the ordinance, we probably can't change this. If you're gonna go by.
We look over and look together to the next ten years. You're not gonna have little family farms anymore. You can't make enough to feed a chicken on them now anymore. I mean, you gotta be realistic. These guys, every farmer that's making a living right now has a semi. I bet you they have as many semis as they have tractors. You know. Gotta change with the times.
Well, is everybody okay with table it for like thirty days till the next month? To get some more discussion kind of about it. Craig, is he around somewhere? Sound okay to you?
So we're gonna discuss the conditions and stuff, cause you know. Sit down and maybe we can restructure this so everybody's happy.
I have one question. So if this was, if this building was had cows in it. Does that mean it's automatically permitted? Because you're debating whether it's commercial or not? Or is it the actual?
Actually, it's not a foregone conclusion. We've had a lot of opposition to hog buildings and expansions that way too. So. Just because it's ag doesn't mean that people are gonna enjoy it in their neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, so it it occurs no matter what.
There's the market shutdown. It comes down whether it's a permitted use or even optional or conditional use.
What would like a egg building be a permitted use then?
The egg building wouldn't fall under what we're talking about right now. But there may be other things.
Oh, so elaborate on that. So there are some. Or like animal operations, once they kind of certain level or animal unit, then they will become conditional use as well. Below that, they're just up permitted. But we do, there's some feedlot regulations that that kind of play in.
And when you get real big, when the state gets.
Actually, I think if this was a machine shed. It'd be permitted. There'd be no conditional use permit for a machine shed. You can build a machine shed this big out there and. And it's it's under the ordinance, it's permitted. So this is different. It's it's a business. So that's that's what the problem is.
Much farming's a business nowadays too.
Yeah.
Size of them.
So should we take a roll call on whether we wanted table this? Is that where we're at kind of right now?
Yeah, I think you guys get a motion.
I'll make a motion to table it for thirty days.
Thirty days.
Till next month's meeting.
Right. Motion's been made and seconded and we'll do a roll call.
Josh Graham.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yep. Yes.
Ted Hamel.
Yes.
Richard Cho.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So table it for a month.
Guys would like to get together in the meantime and see what we can do to make this so everybody's happy. We gotta have the water plant. We gotta make sure the dirt and all that stuff is. Gets to the BCA and. So we got anybody mad and hopefully we can. The interesting thing that's in this whole deal is the general agriculture. That's seems to be the biggest problem. Until we change that. Means we're tied.
Yeah.
So that should be something that we want to put on the next slide.
Good timing because the question.
Thanks for everything.
That'd be perfect. That's one big thing.
Storage area, they got some trees along.
He went to the city of Rushford. They would give him.
Still it would.
An acre or more. Put all this. Tanks up and everything. You want to buy the city store water.
Well, they don't want to look at.
He went to the city of Houston. When the tanks are there. He asked for a septic system or.
Well, they volunteered.
True. They couldn't connect him to make him do it like this.
Or.
That's a block. I mean.
I was thinking of some kind of trees.
He had a connector. The whole.
So if there was just a farm machinery, would that be, it would be permitted.
This is one of the things. Tony Klein up there, trying to sell his gas. He has a new pressure.
No side.
Have you seen paper? He calls gas and now now he goes. Then there he goes. He said, you know what? He says, it's not, and I know it's just money. You know. And these guys.
Yeah.
I mean, so. There you go. They would have the building right there too. For the records and everything.
Must be looking for anything.
Well, I guess we're ready to move on to the next hearing now.
Yeah.
I was a great.
I was a great younger than this.
Oh, there he is. Yeah, he was here for a year. Canada's already.
Well, we'll start the Cruko Rock hearing.
Um, please take notice that an application has been made by Cruko Company's LLC, six oh eight Pine Street in Caledonia for conditional use permit to do mineral extraction in an ag district in Winnebago Township. Uh, said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room in the City of Caledonia at six PM on Thursday, February twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at three oh four South Marshall Street in Caledonia or email to Marty Carrick. And must be received by Tuesday, February fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. Comments in regard to the petition received by the state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. And that was advertised on February ninth of twenty twenty-two.
You wanna just address the issue and tell us what you're up to?
Yeah, I think this is pretty straightforward. Some of you are more familiar with this quarry site than others. Uh, just briefly, uh, we've been operating this quarry, I used to be owned by Gary Myers and then uh, we recently purchased it. Uh, we've been operating this for over a decade now. It's a very, very small rock quarry. And uh, there were issues over the grandfathered status of that quarry. Us and the county agreed to go through this process. Uh, so we would apply for a conditional use permit and if it got denied, we could still mine as a grandfathered quarry, but it'd be a lesser number of acres. So that's kind of the background here. So we applied for a permit. Uh, we are, it's gonna stay a small quarry, we did seven acres. Uh, you can kinda see that on the map. It's gonna be a small quarry, don't intend to be a massive operations. Um, if you have any questions, I guess, feel free. We don't have any issues with any of the conditions, except there's two of them that we think are unnecessary and one of them that I think we can compromise on. But otherwise, the complaints that we've received, um, we don't tend to do any washing of rocks, so the Minnesota DNR's comments aren't necessary. Um, and the fields, it seems their complaint is more an issue with pruning spit to the south. I know when they applied for their permit in two thousand eighteen, I don't believe they had a stormwater permit, so there were a lot of concerns about water issues and I think they had a lot of runoff problems. That was all dealt with uh, with that permit and if the fields, if something isn't being done there, I, they have to take that up and file a complaint with the. We haven't had any issues with our quarry other than the issue regarding the non-conformity status, so we've not had any complaints um, about the operations itself. Uh, so yeah.
So is that about the the monorock that's there is a seven acres, is that kinda what's in the quarry or is that what you're saying?
Well, no, so there is a twenty acre parcel. Um, right now, the current open pit, I believe is I'm, is slightly under one acre in size. Um, and this would just allow us to continue operating up to seven acres. That's gonna take decades to get. I know, uh, we did one shot in, was it one or two shots, two small shots in two thousand eight? Um, and that rock, we just, I think, called the last bits of it out, so that took over a decade. And so it doesn't expand very, very rapidly.
Is that why you're limited to seven acres instead of larger because it's?
Yes, and we kinda operate smaller quarries uh, relative to county. Keeps the rock available closer to sites and transportation of rock is one of the highest parts of the cost of the material nowadays. So uh, we like having this quarry in this location for us and we intend to keep this smaller operation like most of our quarries are.
You talked about hauling it to another quarry to process, where would that be?
Um, so because it's a very small size, um, we did process some rock and so when we did this shot in two thousand eight, we hauled some of that shot rock out to the Caledonian quarry where we have a pressure more set up and stuff. Uh, we did process a little bit in there, I think, to what, what was it called, breaker rock or breaker rock? Um, and as the quarry expands and gets bigger, you'll be able to get more pressures in there and get more different sizes. Some of that got called out. And that would be done too, uh, until more of the quarry footprint opens up.
I guess a big concern I've got is that culvert that crosses county room five just don't down slope from where you're located. Is that gonna be an issue, do you think, as far as runoff? I mean, um, I know you're located right next to the the road itself. When there's water coming down along the road, will that enter your quarry at all or will that be kept out?
Well, there is a ditch that runs along the roadway and that is on the opposite side of it, so we're on the other side of the road.
Right.
And to date, we haven't had any issues. Like I said, in the plan, we talk about if, you know, rain, we do have a stormwater permit. We have to monitor stormwater discharges uh, and put things in place in case there are water, uh, water issues. So we open to doing a berm, creating a pond if necessary to store any water. You know, it kinda depends on how heavy rains and stuff are, if they get worse or, you know, sometimes it's not an issue at all, so.
So any water that falls into quarry itself was stated?
It plans to stay in the quarry.
Questions? Kind of a quarry convenience for you guys, right? Like, um, close to a job site, close to this, I mean, um.
It would be close for a township or a road job that's close. When you start trucking rock,
Yeah.
ten miles, fifteen miles and you're talking an all over the round trip takes a lot of trucks.
Yeah.
Well, I think, any more questions of operation? That should be good then, if you guys wanna go back, you can stay there for all we care.
I I know that, this is just for me, but I know that, um, in the fields comments, um, that really didn't have, to my mind, anything to do with you guys. I mean, what, what somebody else does or doesn't do in their quarry isn't, doesn't, shouldn't, maybe it does, but it should reflect on what you're gonna do in yours, so. Anybody who has those comments back their head.
Like I said, I understand their concern. It seemed like their concern is more with pruning. And I know there was a lot going on with that quarry when they were going through their permitting process. I think there were a lot of things that pruning had to do. I don't know if they did them or not, that again is for them to go a different route on getting that issue dealt with, so.
Yeah. Well, to address that, I think the county has to maybe follow up on that a little bit too, and I spoke to Martin about that today too. There there doesn't need to be something to kinda help them out there, cuz that wasn't quite right there as well. That's another issue. I'm taking. So are there any other comments from anybody else here? You know, that was the one from the fields and I think we started to talk about that already, so. Anybody else in the audience that wants to speak?
And I guess the DNR comments, as he referenced, as far as the possibility that there would be a requirement for water appropriations permit, but as he mentioned, they don't plan to wash anything there, so that would be relevant.
I think we can go to findings of fact then. Everybody else is comfortable with that?
Alright, so number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Analysis says that the comprehensive plan uh, states to encourage the balance of a transportation system which properly balances considerations of safety, accessibility, environmental protection and cost. The more board may consider that allowing expansion of existing quarries is a viable option to balance private and public interests and aggregate material.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis and number one, say aye. Any opposed to that analysis?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for proposed use. Analysis says that a conditional use permit request was required per settlement agreement between the applicant and the county, uh, but the CUP will allow for the continued use and expansion of the existing shits quarry site.
Those that agree with the analysis and number two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality for county. Analysis says if applicant indicates the site operates under a stormwater permit issued by the MPCA. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit regulates stormwater and wastewater discharges to land and surface waters. An intermittent stream runs parallel with county five on the west side of the road and flows to Winnebago Creek. And there is one culvert nearby providing upstroke runoff access to that intermittent stream. This feature warrants careful attention to stormwater runoff. Otherwise, no fuel, hazardous materials or chemicals will be stored on site.
Those that agree with the staff analysis and number three, say aye. Any opposed?
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis is that there is no change in use of proposed increase in intensity on a regular basis at the site. Fued in terms of number of hauls per day, just an ex, it's just an expansion of the footprint. The applicant believes this proposal should not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. However, this area, not necessarily this operator, has experienced issues with runoff in the past and careful attention is needed to prevent further problems. They plan to contain stormwater within the quarry floor with the use of berms and a holding pond if needed. And additional measures may be employed if necessary, including refrat concrete berms and so forth.
All those that agree with the staff analysis and number four, say aye. Any opposed to that?
Number five, that the soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis is that after stripping approximately five feet of silt and overburden, blasted process and stockpiled on site, the overburden will be stockpiled on site for use in berm construction and eventually reclaim the site when operations.
All those that agree with the staff analysis and number five, say aye. Any opposed?
Six, that potential pollution hazards been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis is that potential pollution hazards for typical quarry operations may include fuel and chemical storage, wastewater, dust, vibration and noise. This site will have no fuel storage. In addition, no washing of rock will take place mitigating concerns for hazardous chemical waste. While limestone and dol stone is not easily airborne and dust particles are not easily suspended in the air for prolonged periods, suppressants can be used in the vicinity of machinery, but applicants feel that screening resulting from the natural topography and surrounding resources will mitigate dust and noise disturbances on adjacent properties. Dust and noise are regulated by the state and a licensed blasting contractor will be utilized and will follow standard operating procedures to deal with vibrations.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, say aye. Any opposed?
That, number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis is that the infrastructure in place of the existing quarry will be utilized for proposed expansion. No utilities are required for this operation and applicant feels this expansion will not impact the haul traffic from their site.
All those that agree with number seven, staff analysis, say aye. Any opposed?
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis says if applicant has identified locations which within the future quarry footprint that will be utilized for parking machinery and vehicles to ensure it will not take place on county five. Parking spaces are anticipated for two employees. Until then, shot rock will be hauled off-site for processing. Note that in the future, the applicant states, no material will be called into the site for processing. And then as a quarry footprint expands, there will be more loading space for haul trucks. And in in the interim, no parking of vehicles or equipment can take place on the roadway or within the right of way of county five.
All those that agree with the analysis and number eight, say aye. Any opposed?
Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Analysis is that the proposals to use the driveway and parking areas currently in use with existing quarry, no significant increase in intensity of traffic is anticipated. If a large haul project comes up, temporary signage comes posted on county five. No parking or stockpiling can take place on the roadway or within county right of way.
All those that agree with this, analysis and number nine.
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Analysis says that active pouring is already underway in the area. The surrounding property is predominantly agricultural use and woodland, which is not anticipated to be affected. In addition, there are five dwellings located with a half mile, within a half mile of the site. The proposal will allow pouring to occur further to the northeast, which will encroach further on two properties. The board should consider the following when assessing potential impacts on these dwellings. The setbacks required by the ordinance performance standards are met. That state standards for noise and dust are applicable, that federal guidelines for vibration exist and that the board can require adherence to them as a condition. The board can also limit hours of operation as a condition. Hours of operation as proposed, as proposed by the applicant are limited to six, from six AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday and seven AM to three PM on Saturday. In addition, screening fugitive dust, noise and vibrations from blasting should all be considered.
Just to comment on that, is it gonna be very often that it be till eight PM, I kinda noted? So that's probably.
I I use the same hours that pruning had listed. It's been used on Agnes forty, the same kind of footprint, so I just use the same hours.
Okay. It shouldn't be a problem. I mean, the neighbors, some might think that was kinda late, but it's not gonna be an issue anyway. All those in favor of the analysis as presented, say aye. Any opposed?
Number eleven, that the establishment of, the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property with predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis says that the areas adjacent to the proposed site are cropland and woodland and the county is not aware of development plans for this area. This request may limit citing of future dwellings and adjacent open quarter quarters, but this request does not render them unbuildable. This proposal is to expand an existing mining site and the proposed reclamation identifies pre-vegetation for grazing, low-impact ag use or wildlife habitat as opposed mining land use options which are consistent with surrounding properties.
All those in favor of the analysis on number eleven, say aye. Any opposed?
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration so that none of these will constitute nuisance and to control light of signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis says that noise is regulated by Minnesota chapter seventy thirty for class three noise areas, which is ag and related activities that prescribe standards for day and night that are consistent with speech, sleep annoyance and hearing conservation requirements on nearby properties. The MPCA also regulates fugitive dust. Limestone excavated out of the quarry is not easily airborne and the dust particles created are not easily suspended in the air for prolonged periods. Fugitive dust is a concern and the applicants may use suppressants if necessary. Machinery will only operate during business hours and processing will take place intermittently. The applicants feel that the topography and surrounding timber will assist in creating a barrier to adjacent properties. A third-party contractor will complete blasting and the applicant has indicated a willingness to notify neighbors twenty-four hours in advance of blasting operations. There will be no lighting time for this process.
Agree with the staff analysis and number twelve, say aye. Any opposed?
Um, I think we have to go through it since we didn't do it ahead of time. Um, so number thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district, and this is not applicable.
All those that agree with that, say aye. Any opposed?
Fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Analysis says that mineral extraction is a conditional use in the ag protection district subject to requirements of chapter twenty-seven, which limits rock quarries to forty acres and this request is substantially less than nearby skyline quarry recently permitted a thirty-four acre quarry site. And there is no density limitations for rock quarries.
All those that agree with that analysis, sign if I was saying aye. Any opposed?
Number fifteen, that site-specific conditions and other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Analysis says that the current proposal is not significantly different from past operations at the site. The conditions offered below are intended to further protect the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare.
All those that agree with number fifteen, say aye. Any opposed? Should we go through the recommendations first or some approval findings?
I'll make a recommendation that we approve the findings as presented.
I'll second that.
And roll call on that probably?
Yeah, um, Josh Grant?
Yep.
Feldmeyer?
Yes.
Larry Haffner?
Here.
Yes.
Uh, Rich Cho?
Yes.
Jim Weezer?
Yes.
And Greg Myrie?
Yes.
I just wanna confirm or look at one thing where we were talking about public comments, I believe that engineer submitted one.
Yeah, he did.
Was that in the? Um, so I just, I mean, you guys got to read it, it's in.
Um, so I just, I mean, you guys got to read it, it's in the record. I just want to make note that, or when you asked about comments, that there was one additional.
And the two conditions that are prominent are the ones that we can address that are necessary, but.
Okay, yeah, so, that's what, that's what brought it up too, is because it's gonna come later, so I just wanted to make sure that we got that. Okay, so we can move on.
So we'll just leave that alone, but I suppose we should go through the conditions.
Recommendations?
Yeah.
Yes, or to the motion, or for the.
Oh, we should do the conditions for the motion.
We didn't.
So, we're including the two, the two standard conditional use permit conditions, that's one and two. The rest of them, I, I guess you could say they've, seems as if they've become the standard for some of the quarries in the last five or six years. Um, the number, so we look at number six, which talks about financial assurance. Um, it looks like we have done variable rates there based upon operations. Um, so that's something you guys must consider. And then, I think that was the last, um, I based, and then I based a couple of the conditions off of the request of the highway engineer, the last eleven and twelve.
I think the bond is discussed in number five, isn't it?
Yep. Yep, a financial assurance shall be filed with the treasurer in an amount not less than fifty, fifteen hundred dollars per acre was most recent quarry um, we had done, but that was not, it's, it's been variable.
If I can add, so I know, um, because that's been an issue on several of these past quarries. Not like standard, set by the board, like what should apply to these quarries. And, uh, Jerry supplied for theirs at the Gaff Road, like at quarters. Um, it was, it's a twenty-eight acre parcel, it's not on a smaller scale. What they did there was that if the county board ever did implement a, a, uh, county-wide, you know, standard for reclamation bonds, then they would be required to pull one out. Um, so it was kind of left open, but it wasn't ever required. The other ones that have it are ruinings down in the problematic one. Um, and cabinets and sky, uh, not sky, it's Rover, Rover Quarry in Spring Grove. All of them are very large quarries, thirty acres plus. Um, so I think you should take that into account. Um, this is seven acres. We've been in business in the county for over fifty years, we have connections here, we own the property. I don't think it's a concern like it is on some of the larger quarry properties. We're gonna keep all those tops still on site, use that for reclamation. Fifteen hundred, I think we estimated it'd be about a thousand tops per acre, so it's a very small amount. I don't think one's needed for this site, I think you could do something similar to, or we asked that you do something similar to, uh, Don Jerry's quarry where if it ever is later required by the board across the county on all quarries, that then you would open up, but.
Well, that's up to the county board though, isn't it? It's not up to us.
Right.
Correct?
I think what they've done in the past is, you guys have proposed, yeah, made a recommendation.
Recommendation, okay, I see, yep.
We've got to submit a reclamation annually, anyway, that's already in there, that's.
Well, yeah, the reclamation tag is in there, and if they have any questions or want to update one, they can request it.
It won't be closed for quite some time.
It won't be closed to seven acres for, yeah, well, I'll probably be dead before it gets to, being honest, so.
How's everybody feel about that?
It's not a big deal, I don't think, on this smaller quarry. I, I mean, I mean, it's not a very big base on this.
It'd be different if we had like, like, a set standard for it, but we don't, so every time it's kind of.
Right.
That's something we need to put into our new land use plan too, or something like that.
Um, and since ours is just a recommendation, it just revisited work.
Well, maybe that will be revisited in the land use plan, and then at that point, we can deal with it.
Like I said, that's what, I think that would be what we tell Jerry's quarry, that if it ever does later, that may put it on.
And maybe we should put that in the conditions to listen writing, you know, so that we actually said that.
Like I said, we're fine with that.
Yes. Everybody feel okay with that?
Yeah.
Let me get some language here, if that's what. So, he, in the Jerry quarry, it was Houston County reserves the right to require a performance bond or other form maturity bond at a later date. The mine operator recognizes this right and agrees to provide the requested purity within thirty calendar days of the date of receipt. So you guys are striking what we have for five on here, and you're fine with that language?
Yeah.
With the sixty days?
Sixty days, sure.
Interval?
Yeah. Can we do that?
Do we want to reference why we're not doing it now, because, or, or what's gonna, what's anticipated to cause that to happen? The, you know, the fact that the county, county may require it.
Um, I suppose if, the ordinance actually says that we are, the county board's supposed to pass by resolution, kind of a standard amount for each quarry. And to my knowledge, that hasn't ever happened, so I suppose if something went into effect where they did that, caught all of the existing ones.
There's no reason to put that on there. I mean, to, to reference back to the county putting the minimum.
So take out.
No, that one's, the one you had is good.
Oh, you want to, you're saying you want to.
He was just wondering what would trigger that, that that would occur.
Yeah.
And that's arbitrary, it doesn't really matter for what we're doing here, I don't think.
Yes, I agree, after, I, I, I brought it up, but I don't.
No, I see what you're going with, that makes sense. We probably don't need to put it in there, I don't think. Just leave it the way you got it.
Yep.
Kind of self-explanatory.
Um, so you're leaving condition five as it's written?
No, the way, the way you.
You wanted as.
Exactly.
I just explained it.
Yep.
Okay.
You agree on that, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
But with a sixty-day.
Yep.
Um.
We've got more conditions.
I guess that's up to you guys.
Well, I'll make this really easy, we don't have an issue with any of the other conditions except the last two. Um, eleven, the quarry operations, including by that limited due to processing or stockpiling material and staging, loading, and cross, not be conducted on highway five or within the right-of-way of any site. That is already in the ordinance, but to be clear, because he says that we stockpile materials in the shoulder of the road, that's not the way the ordinance is written. The ordinance says excavating or stockpiling shall not be conducted closer than a hundred feet of the right-of-way line where such, where such excavation may create traffic or line of sight problems. Because of the way, all our rock was always stockpiled within the site, never caused any line of sight problems. So I think there's just a link, I think he, I know we did have trucks parked on the road once, um, two employee trucks on there. We can agree to not do that again, so we can make sure that that's answered. But I think there was a little misunderstanding of what happened in the past, so, but we never had rock that blocked line of sight or created traffic problems or anything like that.
Well, these are Brian's recommendations.
Yeah, these are his recommendations, but it's, I don't think it's necessary, because it's already in the ordinance. Um, he, he just, I think, didn't look at that last part of that, where it's, as long as it doesn't create a line of sight.
Okay. But they're not, we don't have those in our conditions at all.
But he's, yeah, and he's not even saying you have to be that a hundred feet off the right-of-way, he's just talking, because that would set you back.
Yeah.
So we want to take that condition out, do you want to take that one out?
I, I mean, that's up to you guys. That was just at the recommendation of the engineer based, based upon past issues, I guess.
What you're saying, if I'm understanding, eleven is essentially already in the code, so we just want to say it twice. It's like, you're not enforcing the first one, so why put it in there?
Yes. I think he even said, he wanted that to reiterate it or make it more explicit.
Yeah, he just said there were a couple items that needed to be addressed, and then, just because this is, it is, the existing quarry is so close to the road, the operations have resulted in stockpiles being placed all the way to the shoulders, and vehicles and equipment parked on the road during quarry operations, um, like such as loading trucks and using conveyors. Um, but it's not allowed, uh, as we discussed, and it would hurt to reiterate it by having a condition on the permit stating that all quarry operations must take place outside of the right-of-way. So that's, so I guess that's all.
But the wording is a little different to the ordinance and what she said. It's kind of an unnecessary condition.
Not as far as this acre feet of water.
So, that is, that's a rough one, so, um, with water runoff for theirs, but they also didn't have a stormwater permit on their site at the time, and that was, they were going to the MPCA, and I think, uh, something was working with MPCA to settle that whole dispute. We have a stormwater permit, it's active, we have to, you know, the MPCA, uh, you know, they have the jurisdiction, uh, and they regulate, uh, water discharge limits and required protection of surface and groundwater quality. So it's kind of like, if there was an issue, it would be in MPCA's territory. Um, so I'm not sure what providing that report would actually provide you guys.
Well, if you look at the sites from one side of the road, the other, yours is nowhere near the amount of stuff that came off the other.
Yeah, yeah. So, like I said, if there ever was an issue, it'd be the MPCA handled, would handle it, or be involved during stormwater threat, so. It's not unnecessary.
I would kind of agree with that, or anybody else?
Well, I, I think the point there too is just, while it's not your guys' property, the fact that there has been issues on that, in that area in the past, we don't want to compound issues, and so, um, he was just looking, you know, to address that, that concern.
Well, actually, it's agreed that they're gonna keep all the water in the, in the quarry already, so there's not much where they can do.
But I think he, in his email, he notes that I say "if necessary", and the reason I use that language is I can't predict the weather patterns, we did have a lot more rain, so we might have to build a water pond, but that's not necessary, so I think he thought there's an unknown vague term being used, and I just use it because I, I can't predict the weather. If all of a sudden there's a ton more rainfall, we might have to change our plans to keep all that water on site. So I think that was kind of what he felt maybe was a concern, but, like I said, that's all dealt with with the stormwater.
Well, there was definitely a concern a few years back on the other side. So, I, I kind of agree with, it's all in the ordinance, you already agreed to do it anyway.
Yeah.
You know, and you said that you'd keep it all in the, in the quarry floor, so we're all in agreement on that, aren't we?
Take eleven and twelve out?
I think so. We need a motion for that.
Can modify five, right?
So.
Can change five.
I want an motion to approve the amended, um, conditions.
Would you like me to read them?
We didn't approve them at all, yeah.
But that's what we're asking for.
So, you're looking at one, two, three, and four, as written. Five will be changed to the, then Houston County reserves the right to require a performance bond or other form maturity bond at a later date. The mine operator agrees to provide the requested purity within sixty calendar days of the date of receipt of, of request. Six will remain, seven will remain, eight will remain, and nine will remain, and ten, and then we've removed, so we've removed eleven and twelve.
We got a motion.
I'll make a motion to add conditions, with those conditions that we just said. Second.
Probably roll call on that.
Was that you?
Yep, yes.
Uh, Josh Green.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Haffner.
Yes.
Ed Hommel.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Is there a motion to, uh, recommendation?
I'll make a motion, we recommend, and I'd send this recommendation to the county board for their decision.
With those conditions.
Yes.
Second?
A little second.
Motion made in second, and we're gonna roll call that one too.
I, I guess I'm confused, what was the, the first one was just on the, you were proving the condition?
Conditions with the amended, the conditions, yeah. We approved the findings once already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we did the amended conditions, and this is for the recommendation that the county.
Okay, Josh Green.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Larry Haffner.
Yes.
Ed Hommel.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yes.
We see there's the recommending valuable to board on, uh, you don't have to be present, you can do. Uh, it's a during a board question, and so, um, then they make the final decision.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, any other business to come before the board tonight?
We did our minutes, didn't we?
Yeah, the minutes really, yep.
We did that right away. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?